I would like to call to order the Tuesday, September 17th meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And roll call please, Phyllis.
Counselor Belz, here. Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez. Counselor Sharmer.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Here.
Mayor Coons.
Here.
And Byron, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a few things this evening. I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about our public comments. Welcome everyone to the Monmouth City Council meeting. We are streaming live on Facebook as we have recently. And we are accepting comments from the public this evening. Those comments are entertained during the time designated under Citizens Comment on our agenda, so if we have any to fill out and give those to Phyllis, our city recorder. Speakers' comments in this forum are limited to three minutes, but the council welcomes additional information in writing. Typically, a speaker's comment is taken under advisement to allow time for the council to review an issue. However, mayor or councillors may ask a speaker for additional information or may convey some information that addresses the comment. Please note on the speaker card if you would like follow-up communication and if so, what avenue is preferred. So, thank you to those citizens who are with us tonight. We'll go over the agenda. Did we want to move the City Hall presentation to...
That'd be good.
Yeah. If it's alright, a little agenda change, and that would be to actually move our discussion about the City Hall design and cost estimates to our regular session. It's a presentation, a little easier to be set up here to do that. If I have permission to do that, we will move that off of the work session agenda and move that to regular session. Also this evening, we will have a regular session, we will have a work session, and then we will be in executive session. We will convene the Urban Renewal Agency Board and put on those hats, and that group will go into executive session. And I will read the script for the purpose of that, to talk about exempt public records before we go into executive session. So, with all that being said, I would like to consider the consent calendar that's been presented to us. It consists of the minutes of the council meeting of September 3rd for both the regular session and the work session. And if there were no changes that needed to be made, then I will entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We'll give that one to Darren. And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have, so we have a couple of presentations actually this evening. And our first one, we are going to welcome some guests from Travel Salem. So, we are part of a larger network of folks who represent us in tourism. And I'll have our guests introduce themselves, and we'll talk a little bit about what all the work that is, great work that's going on. And you all have in front of you, they've given us a couple of their annual reports, visitors' guides, so you can kind of see some of the print work that we get.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Angie Oniuchi. I'm the President and CEO of Travel Salem. And this is my colleague Irene Bernard. She's the Executive Vice President and Director of Marketing and Public Relations. We wanted to come before you this evening to share with you some updates on what's happening in regional tourism that obviously includes Monmouth in Polk County. So, Travel Salem is a destination marketing and management organization, and we promote Marion and Polk Counties. So, the presentation have a lot of material in here. And so I'm going to zoom through it because I'm committed to getting through this in 15 minutes. I know you have a really busy agenda tonight, and I don't want to hold you over. But it would be welcome to have any comments or questions tonight, and if there's anything I can follow up on with you, I'd be happy to do that as well. I also wanted to just mention that Counselor Carey serves as a Commissioner on our Salem Area Sports Commission, and we want to thank him so much for taking the time to do that. And I'll talk about that a little bit in a moment. So, the Mid Willamette Valley, which is Marion and Polk County and Yan Hill County, is the beginning of adventure around the world. And we have so many wonderful things here, and happy to share some of that with you tonight. Travel Salem's DNA, our mission statement, is really about promoting the valley. And we're an economic development generator, specifically tourism-focused. We were founded in 1984, and we are a nonprofit formed much like a Chamber of Commerce. Our Board of Directors has representation from Polk County specifically, so I'm sure you all know Mr. Austin McQuigan well. He's a terrific asset, and he's been on the board for more than 13 years. We also have Sean Irvine from the City of Independence and Sean O'Day from the COG. So, this is a depiction of the tourism landscape in terms of how we're competing with destinations around the state of Oregon. So, we rank down there between Lincoln City and Medford in terms of our budget size. And so, we have a long ways to go to compete, basically. And these destinations have a lot more money and a lot more bandwidth to do great things. So, what Travel Salem relies on is partnerships, collaboration, and innovation. This is a pie chart that shows our revenue sources. We're very diversified in our revenue. We focus a lot on that. We don't want to rely on one specific source. But our largest funder is the City of Salem, and they fund us through the transient occupancy tax funds that are collected in the City of Salem, 61% of our budget. We also have funding that comes from Marion and Polk Counties. We have wine country plate money that I'll talk about a little bit later, membership funds, special events. We also received new this last year, money to fund a Polk County Destination Development position. And Monmouth participated in that, and we want to thank you so much for your investment. And we'll be talking a little bit about that as well and what those dollars have been doing for Monmouth. The Willamette Valley Visitors Association there at the top in brown is a regional destination marketing organization that has multiple counties in it, and I'll talk about that as well. And then we have a very small amount of co-op money there. To date since 2016, we have received about $400,000 in wine country plate money. And the wine country plate was an initiative that was launched by Travel Salem, and it's supporting tourism across the state of Oregon. It is the only wine plate in the country. Tourism is the front door to economic development. What does that mean? Well, any executive that moves a business here probably visited here as a visitor first. And so tourism is really the glue that holds the whole thing together. Tourism touches every corner of the economy, and it's a really powerful generator for our local communities. Travel Salem is measured on three primary key performance measurements: estimated economic impact, transient occupancy tax, and leverage. And I'll talk about those a little bit more in a second, but I wanted to share with you some statistics there. So, Marion County and Polk County, we have economic impact data for both of the counties. You can see how many trips visitors are making to the counties, how many people per travel party, how much they're spending per day, and how many nights they stay here. So, our goal at Travel Salem is to lengthen the stay. The longer a visitor stays here, the more money they leave in our communities. So, driving that 2.4 nights for Polk County up a little bit incrementally each year or every five years, because it is, it's difficult to move that, we're working really hard to do that because that drives millions of dollars into our communities. Oregon economic impact of tourism is huge, so $12.3 billion, 115,000 tourism jobs. Here in the Mid Willamette Valley, $603 million in economic impact, 6.5 million overnight visitors, and over 7,100 tourism jobs. And you can see the trends in the graph there. You know, the numbers aren't as important as the trend itself. We want to see that trend going up. And these numbers are provided by economists, Dean Running Associates, and they provide this information for destinations like ours all over the country. This is what 7,100 jobs looks like. That's how many people tourism is providing jobs to in our two county region. It's critical to our, the health of our economy. And tourism jobs are unique in some ways because they're diversified. You have part-time, you have seasonal employment, you have full-time, you have family wage jobs, and that diversification of job structure from the tourism sector really creates a healthy economy. Transient occupancy tax, so this is primarily Salem-generated, but you can see the trends there as well. They've been going up, and they're flattening out a little bit, but that's okay. And so, these are the fees that visitors pay when they come to stay in our hotels. And they really come back into the community and directly impact our quality of life here. The other, the third and final component of the key performance measurements that we are evaluated on is leverage. And that's a term for donated products and services. So, yes, we have cash budget, but we also work very hard with collaboration and partnerships to get donated products and services to do what we need to do. Those are some examples there on the left of the types of donated products and services that we secure. And you can see on the right that last fiscal year, we were a little over 3 million in donated products and services. So, we track that carefully because it really does make a huge difference in our ability to do the hard work that we want to do for you. Consumer engagement is another metric that we use internally. This is how many times do we touch a visitor to get them to act, make a decision, book a trip? And so, you can see the trends since 1415 at 41 million engagements to currently in 1819, 128 million engagements. That's a 200% increase over five years. And we're doing that through social media, Visitor Information Network, and a lot of different things that are mentioned there. And I'm going to go into a little bit more detail for you here as we proceed. But consumer engagement is important, and the reason that we've been able to increase that by 200% is by consistency in our staffing model, low turnover, and really drilling down into, as opposed to quali- quantity, quality. And I'll talk about that as well. So, the bottom line with tourism, it's really all about job creation and quality life. And so, I am really proud to say that on the Travel Salem staff, we have folks that live all over Marion and Polk County area. And so, we have a lot of expertise on the team because we spread that around the two county area. So, what makes our communities different here if we were to compare our destination to some other destinations within the state? So, if you look at the Salem area, so, and then Albany area, Corvallis area, and so forth, you can see the different types of assets and how many we have here that are color-coded across the bottom. You'll see that Yan Hill County has a ton of wine. We know that. Eugene has a lot of wine and a lot of beer. Portland has a ton of beer. But if, what's really significant here is if you look at how well-rounded our destination is, we have a lot of everything. So, we're not only one thing. We have a lot to celebrate, a lot of stories to tell, and that's really important and exciting. So, what differentiates our markets from the, you know, others, and what's our competitive advantage? If you look at Salem assets specifically, state capital's important, the cultural heritage assets, the state fairgrounds, downtown shopping that's connected by Sky Bridges, which is really great, the Mental Brown Island Park, which is the largest inner-city park in the country. Our location is critical on the 45th parallel, which is the same as Bordeaux region in France. That's why we have wonderful wines here. Willamette University, Sports Commission. And then if you look at the region, wow, it continue, I mean, just amazing assets. And two of the top attractions in the state of Oregon are right here in our communities. So, we have a wealth of stuff to promote, a lot to offer our visitors. And Travel Salem's working really hard to tease out those stories to drive that economic impact. Our marketing program has a lot of different channels that we're working on. Our Visitor Information Network, for instance, we have a variety of different locations there. I can't, let's see, there's five, six, seven, nine of them currently. And our visitation is up tremendously. We had a 42% growth last year to almost 300,000 visitors. And that's primarily because of our new location downtown Salem. I don't know if you've been able to visit, but we're on the corner of State and Liberty Streets, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Every day, but anyway. But that has increased our visibility and access for folks coming to visit. And when they come into our visitor center, our goal is to increase the length of stay. So, when they come in, they might be actually heading to Bend, or they're going to the coast. What can we talk to them about to get them to stay here? And we've had a tremendous success in increasing that length of stay and getting them to stay here. So, really great numbers there, lots of good stuff happening. The Visitor's Guide, there's a copy of that for you in front of you. We promote dining and different culinary experiences, our agricultural bounty, our entertainment districts, and all of the wonderful recreation that we have. There's itineraries in there and lots of great information. We do produce 140,000 of those a year, and we distribute them to 800 locations in Oregon, Washington, California, and British Columbia. And then we send them all over the world as well, but we have 800 locations in those specific places. Our website, travelsalem.com, we had 430,000 user sessions last year. And we spend a lot of time and a lot of effort to get, make our website as up-to-date and engaging as possible. We are seeing user time on our website go up, which is great. And I encourage you to take a look at it sometime if you have time, and I know that time is precious. On our e-communication side, we produce a blog and a variety of e-newsletters that have quite a few subscribers, and we generate a lot of unique content through those vehicles. On our social media side, we put a lot of energy into that, too. We have a full-time dedicated person who does nothing but drive content through our channels. We primarily focus on Facebook and Instagram, but we have other channels that we do use as well, but we primarily focus on those, too. Here's an example of a post on Facebook about our Tri-County Charm Trail. There's a really great post there about the Opel Creek Wilderness Penline Falls area. This is just some examples of different types of social media that we push out, cultural heritage, you know, culinary stuff. This Instagram post here was the most liked post in 1819. Got a ton of traffic. It is a unique, beautiful shot, and it resonated with visitors. And we do look at the analytics. What content are we pushing out there? How is it resonating? And we tweak our tactics accordingly. This is an example of a campaign that we recently did for Monmouth. And it was a Facebook campaign. We highlighted 15 businesses. And we boosted those posts, so we paid advertising to promote the posts that we were putting out there. So, you can see the headline there, "What to Do in Monmouth, Oregon." And it was a blog, I believe. Is that right? Wasn't that a blog? But huge amount of results, so 4,700 blog page views, reached nearly 114,000 people, and we had 8,000-plus engagements with this social media work from Monmouth. So, very successful, and we'll continue to look for ways to do that. This was not produced as part of the money that you spent for the Destination Development Position. This was Travel Salem money that paid for this, but we're just working hard on your behalf. Salem is MOPO is a hashtag that we've created. And as photos are posted on Instagram, when folks tag them, so visitors come here, whether they're coming for a tournament, sports tournament, or a convention, or just leisure visitors, use this hashtag when they post a photo, we can collect all those photos and use that content in our marketing, which has been really tremendous. We've had over 11,000 engagements with our hashtag, and we've create, generated a lot of really beautiful content, as you can see there, that we use in our marketing. On our Public Relations side, last year we published a ton of articles, and we reached 55 million folks through our publicity efforts, and that publicity was valued at almost $1.5 million. Here's just a small sample of some of the channels that we secured the coverage in. So, we work really hard on that. We do print advertising. We try to promote the three primary pillars that we work in: the culinary, the recreation, the cultural heritage, and those are ads that are all in those specific pillars. We do work with the Film Commission, the Oregon Film Commission. So, Irene, this is her program, and she's the one who's worked on all of these projects. So, their location scouts will contact us, and we will help them find locations. She actually got a call one time from Harley Davidson saying, "Yeah, I was driving down this country road, and I saw this really beautiful tree, and we want to film next to that tree." And she's like, "Could you give us a little more information on that tree?"
That tree!
Of course. She found the tree.
It's a black and white picture of this tree. And I was like, "I think that's an Ankeny Wildlife Refuge."
Wow.
She found it, and they brought 40 crew, staff and crew, and filmed for how many days?
Three days.
Three days. So, that's economic impact. So, we try to definitely pay attention in this sector and stay connected. Our video content is critical. It is the most compelling call to action. More and more visitors are choosing destination based on their video content. So, we are trying to also play in that space as well. We created three different videos. We call them kind of sizzle videos. One of them was about food, recreation, and then wine and beer. And so, we're trying to create that content that gives folks a quick insider's look at to what it's like to be here. On the Destination Development side, we created a Tri-County Charm Trail. We've got almost more than 15,000 charms that are currently in circulation. There's 33 or 36 partners on, 36 partners involved in this in the Tri-County region, and it's still going strong.
Including the Monmouth Independence Chamber of Commerce as one, and Visitors.
That's correct. Thank you for reminding me of that. We also produced an Ale and Trail Passport. And we've got about 2,500 passports out in circulation as well, and those are purchased at various locations. And when they're, all the stamps are collected, you can take it back and win a, get like a beer glass and some other tchotchke. So, those are some Destination Development projects. And Irene, at the end of this, can also provide a little bit more information, details on what the Polk County Destination Development person has been doing, if there's time allowed. Willamette Valley Visitors Association was what I mentioned to you earlier. They're the regional destination marketing organization that is funded through Travel Oregon. So, the counties that are included are Polk, Marion, Yan Hill, Plaquemines, Lynn, Benton, and Lane. And Irene is the past Chair of that group and still on the board. And it's really important because she advocates for our region to make sure we're getting our equal and fair share of publicity and leveraging the $900,000 that they have to spend to promote our area here. Couple of the really great programs that they promoted, they created this acrylic wine bottle. I don't know if you can see it there on the left. It's about 16 feet long. It has these different slices of what it's, you know, the Mid Willamette Valley area here, or Willamette Valley, excuse me, area. And so, there's like culture and heritage and recreation featured in these slices. And so, it's called the Slice of Oregon, and we've had it in the Portland, Seattle, Boise, San Jose airports. And over, almost 8 million visitors have interacted with or seen this display. We also did the Capitol Christmas Tree Campaign when the Christmas tree for Washington D.C. was taken out of our Willamette National Forest here. And Irene and Wava worked on a Christmas ornament campaign where there was 200 ornaments hidden in the forest, and they were all geotagged, and visitors could go search for them and find them, and when they...
Register.
They have to log in or something that they picked it up.
They had to register their number and enter them to win.
And all 200 were picked up. This is a really quick image of the United States there from the Slice of Oregon, which is that large acrylic bottle. We did a raffle, enter to win there in those airports that I mentioned. And we took 2,000 of the entries and just logged them. Where did those folks come from? And you can see they were heavily Midwest or mid, the eastern half of the U.S. So, we reached folks we want to reach and tell our story, and hopefully they'll come back again and stay longer the next time. We're working on a marketing and development toolkit that we'll be able to take out to communities around the counties that will help them with a step-by-step process for creating a tourism strategy. So, all the different components there, from social media best practices to a readiness checklist, anatomy of a marketing plan, and so forth, so we can help communities get off the ground and provide them some additional support. All of our reports and our research are available on our website, and you're welcome to go check those out at any time. On the convention and events and sports side of things, we're really active there as well. Like, so, we coordinate bid proposals to secure group business, so conventions, large events, even weddings or reunions. We arrange the visits with the meeting planners, and we do itineraries and post and pre, pre and post-conference tours and activities as well. On the convention side, last fiscal year, those are some of the major groups that we had in town. And we had 65,000 delegates that we brought into the region through those efforts. So, that equated to about $23 million in economic impact just from the convention program. And during the same time last year, we booked future events at almost $9 million worth of activity. So, lots of good work happening there. I mentioned the Salem Area Sports Commission when I began and thanked Counselor Carey for serving on that. This is a fairly new initiative, and it's really about harnessing the amazing sports venues that we have in our region. Western has one of the best cross-country tracks in the country, as an example. We're really known for softball here. We're really known for soccer here. We have so many opportunities. And so, this Sports Commission, that's their kind of mission statement there. Fostering teamwork, generating excitement, and building community pride through bringing group teams, and whether it's collegiate business, club business, recreational business into our region. So, these are a couple of trade shows that we attend. This NASC, which is the National Association of Sports Commissions, was in Minneapolis. We met with 27 event organizers who make decisions about where to bring their tournaments and their events. We secured seven RFPs from that. We went to Connect Sports in New Orleans, met with 32 event organizers, and walked away with nine leads from that. So, we're actively working that side of the business, and the Sports Commission will be vetting those opportunities and deciding which ones we're going to go after. On the Convention Services side, so when we bring groups here, large conventions or teams here, those are photos right there of the Wally Byam Caravan Club for Airstream Rally. We provide services to their groups when they're here. And so, we worked with 73 groups last year, 117,000 attendees that we reached out to. And so, that Airstream Rally one is really significant. There was Airstreams from every state, 50 states, and international as well, which is amazing. And this is our mantra, "A rising tide lifts all boats," and a unified approach to tourism promotion is really where it's at. Tourism cannot be done in silos. We have to approach it regionally because the visitor, that's how the visitor approaches it. They don't see geopolitical boundaries. So, we have to work together as a destination, and I want to thank you so much for your time. Happy to answer any questions if I had time. And then, like I said, Irene would be more than happy to share with you some highlights from the Polk County Destination Development work.
I think that's good. Yes?
Thank you for all your work.
I have a few minutes for that.
Okay. I'll just mention a few things quickly. Nora Owens was hired a year ago, and she has now left us to go to Portland. I know. So, if you know of anyone, great. Have them contact me, someone who really knows Polk County well. So, Nora did a great job working on a Travel Oregon Food Trail. It's a way to package and showcase the Polk County local farm, ranch, and agricultural assets, culinary businesses, and locally sourced products. So, that is moving along. She was working on a marketing and branding campaign. Two grants have been submitted for that, and we're waiting to hear whether we have funding for that. It's been about four-plus years without a logo or any type of brand focus for Polk County, so that's something very important to the Polk County Tourism Alliance. The Charm Trail, it's very big, 15 sites in Polk County that are participating in that. Bike-friendly business program, she did a really great job of meeting with different businesses throughout the Polk County area and putting together signs so that when cyclists are going through the area, they know where they can stop to fix their bike, get water, use restroom facilities, etc. Oh, this is a huge one. Nora was really instrumental in helping us get the Rural Tourism Studio through Travel Oregon for the Willamette River. So, all of the communities along the Willamette River will be getting together, I think next week is the first meeting, to talk about how we use the river and for recreation and how we access the river. And I'm just going super-duper fast. She did also a great job on all of the social media for Polk County, and so, we want to continue that as well. So, we're just hoping to find that right person.
Thank you. Any questions for Angie and Irene?
Yes.
Our winery person here.
Good evening. Thank you very much for being here. Being a small town in Polk County and seeing that the majority of the visits and stays are occurring in Marion makes sense. The population center is there. But what can we do to better leverage our relationship with you and make certain that the efforts that you're doing already are being utilized here in our community?
Great question. I would say the first thing is photography. I can put a call out to all of you and everyone at home watching on Facebook. Any really... Any really good photography you have, we are hungry for. A picture says way more than any type of written content we could ever produce. So we're always looking at great photos of people in your downtowns, people, you know, cycling, people tasting wine, anything and everything. We will never turn away a good photo. The other thing is, we, we actually do, through the Polk County Tourism Alliance, work really closely with your chamber and your other chambers. So they do an amazing job of getting us when we call out for information. So they're really doing that. The other thing I would probably say, oh, yeah, I have to mention Suzanne. Suzanne has been amazing to work with, and she's been a point for me here, the point person for me. The other thing is lodging. Yes, the bulk of the rooms are in the Marion County area, but we're also really always looking for those really unique lodging stays, yurts, bed and breakfast, cool camping places. Anything like that that you think we might not know about, even if you think we know about, send it our way. We definitely want to know. And also, I could go on and on, but also events are at travelsalem.com. You can self-submit any events. That's probably the number-one thing the region can do. It's free. You go on there. That's where we pull our PR pitches to media. That is where we get all of our information for our blogs. So the events calendar is a really big one, too.
And the events calendar is syndicated out through the Statesman Journal and Travel Oregon and others. So once you put it on to our events calendar, you really are getting a lot of momentum from that.
Regarding the photography, how, how would you prefer to receive images? And is that something that individuals in the community can, can assist with, aside from, through social media?
Yes. We look for 300 or 400 DPI. And they can send them directly to me at ibernards@travelsalem.com. Or you can call the main number and just say, "Hey, who do I send these to?" And they'll direct you to me, and it's 503-581-4325.
Thank you very much.
And I would say, you know, just sort of overarching, you know, tourism really, we're, we've morphed from a destination marketing organization to a destination marketing and management organization. And that's been deliberate because tourism connects with the transportation system and our land use issues and homelessness, all of those issues. So I think one of the greatest things that we can do is to continue our dialogue and talk about opportunities and ideas that you have and how we can do this work better together. Because travel, we don't have any product. We don't sell anything. We are marketing you and your winery or whatever. So continuing the dialogue about issues that are important to you, if you're trying to start a new food pod or any, you know, how can we help or assist you? So just conversation, dialogue is a great way to, to keep the momentum going.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great. Any other questions? All right. Thanks, ladies, very much. And we'll go ahead and get through our reports this evening. I will start with the mayor's report, and I have been extremely busy, but the fruits of that will, will bear later on this evening, so I don't have a lot to report on that. After receiving the official resignation of our city manager, Scott McClure, and announcing that his last day with us will be on October 4th, I will let folks know we are planning a little going-away for him. And that will be fillers on Thursday.
October 3rd, from 4:00 to 6:00 at Monmouth Public Library Meeting Room.
At the Monmouth Public Library Meeting Room. So we're encouraging folks to come in, thank Scott for his 12 years with us, and we'll be getting more word out about that. The other thing Scott and I have been working on is there are a lot of things he is involved in that he represents the city. So kind of trying to figure out, the city has an automatic seat on the Chamber of Commerce Board, for example. That's in the bylaws of the Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center. So we, that, that will be a staff appointment, and the city gets to appoint who we like for that. And another organization that is appointed, we have an appointment to, is of course the MINET Board. We actually have two of them. We, Counselor Lopez serves on the MINET Board. But tonight, I would like to have, entertain the appointment to replace our city manager position on the board because that, in the bylaws, actually is a position. But we can appoint someone, and Scott and I really were thinking about somebody who has a lot of history with the organization, since it will be temporary in nature. Once we get a city manager on board, then this would just be a fill-in. So I would entertain the appointment of Steve Milligan. And Scott and I have secured his interest in the position. So if I can get your agreement and approval on that, and I'll take a motion on that.
Well, I will move that, that former mayor, Steve Milligan, be appointed to the MINET Board.
Second.
God, Roxanne, you're just coming in late. Oh, tonight. Step it up, woman. Thank you. Moved and seconded to appoint Steve Milligan as our interim representative to the MINET Board. Any concerns or discussion?
Any, any, I mean, it was an obviously good choice. However, you know, the, it's valuable to have city manager, somebody that, that is right sort of next to it, even though it's going to be an interim.
Right.
Was that vetted at all? Do we give that any consideration?
We did. We, we looked at the bylaws, and I think MINET's in the process of changing its bylaws.
Not that much, though.
Not that much. Currently, the bylaws state that if the city manager is not appointed, the city manager can serve in an ex officio role on the Board of MINET. As long as those are the bylaws, then we could have an interim serve as an ex officio Board member.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, well, that, yeah, that's, that's happened.
Yes.
So.
When you were there, it was happening.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And, and this would be, what's the length of the appointment?
Until we have a new city manager on board, full-time.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? So all in favor of appointing Steve Milligan to that position temporarily on an interim basis, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. And any opposed? Thanks. I will go ahead and notify MINET of that appointment and have him represent us with his years and years of history with the organization. So that's all I have this evening, and we do have quite a few reports. The Arts and Culture Commission actually has started some work, but nothing specific to report to you all yet. So Counselor Belts, our library board.
Well, the library board did not meet, but we will be meeting next month. And would you like me to continue as Roxanne Belts of the Historic Commission?
Yes, apparently, apparently Roxanne Belts, if you could let us know about the Historic Commission.
So the Historic Commission, we met on September the 4th, and we discussed the new history and mystery that's going to be happening in Monmouth. The event will be held Friday, October 4th, at 7:00 PM at Main Street Amphitheater. This room has also been reserved, just in case the weather argues with us. It's a free event. It's open to the public. We're going to be showcasing four or five different stories about Monmouth's past. Let's see, things that you don't necessarily always hear about. There'll be a few that have more of a spooky element and some that have more of a historic element thrown in the mix. I know I will be one of the storytellers, as is, I believe, Counselor Lopez.
Yes, indeed.
And I think our mayor.
I am the emcee.
Will be the emcee. And so it will be a, it will be quite an event over just across the street. Secondly, the commission, we talked about our partnership with the Wu History Department and the Monmouth Senior Center to start documenting oral histories and stories about Monmouth. And the last thing was a possible grant opportunity to support the restoration of the Ross Theater Building, which is currently where Costume Creations is, just up the street, was a theater. And there's a possibility to get a grant to restore it to become a theater again.
Wow, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Counselor Carey, Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the Planning Commission has not met since I last reported, but they do meet, we do meet tomorrow. Tomorrow evening, 7:00 PM. On that agenda will be sort of a plan for some development down near the Montessori School. And in the, there's a real estate outfit there right now. But anyway, they're looking at a possible expansion and development there. And then a report on the housing needs analysis that will be ultimately coming to us.
Right.
Anyway, that's tomorrow night, 7:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Counselor Schinkel, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, we were not able to meet with a quorum, so did not have a meeting that night. But I do have, Chief Talon provided me with a report on the Traffic Safety Commission that happened on September 9th. There were two items on there. The city will be working with ODOT to complete an agreement, intergovernmental agreement to share rows on Main Street here. And then, secondly, working with Public Works to put three digital speed signs on the entrances to coming into Monmouth. One on Church Street, north Monmouth Avenue, and then from Hellmack Road to Warren Street. So when you're coming into Monmouth, it lights up and says, "Hey, slow down." Says how fast you're going.
And those are the permanent ones that are there, not our trailer.
I understand, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. And so I don't have anything for Winnipeg. Community announcements, then. Actually, I'll go ahead and make one sort of tied onto Parks and Rec. Our skate park, folks, the people who are really working hard to raise money for that skate park are having a can-and-bottle drive next weekend, I understand. And so can and bottle drive. So trying to raise money the old-fashioned way, car washes and bottle, bottle drives as they write grants. And I know they have a Facebook page for the Monmouth Skate Park, and so that's a good way to get ahold of the gentleman that is running that fundraiser. That's one thing I know about. What else do we have going on in the community?
Students will be back very soon.
Students will be back Monday. Monday is student, yesterday was the State of the University address by the president, so we have all those college kids start coming back.
Also, on Saturday, the 21st, the Monmouth Independence Rotary Club will be hosting its first annual Harvest Festival on the Village Green in Edwards Edition at the corner of Edwards and Gwin Street. It will kick off with a, hopefully not too vicious bocce ball tournament. And then there will be lunch served at noon. There'll be a children's dog show. There'll be music and dancing, a class on how to make beer for people who've never made beer before. And the entire event will end at 5:00 with a solemn dedication of a peace pole at the entrance to the Edwards Edition Urban Farm. There'll be dignitaries there to, to speak and, and talk to us about the importance of promoting peace in the world.
Thank you.
So, so this Saturday, corner of Edwards Road and Gwin Street. Try to be there. It'll be a lot of fun, and I've been watching the weather every 10 minutes, and it's still, still looks like it's going to be a beautiful day on Saturday.
Clear right up.
Yeah, great. And John?
Just by way of announcement, you know, I would, because this comes up fairly frequently, the first-day school at MES went well from a traffic standpoint. I've made it sort of my deal to go down there and observe that. And, you know, parents are very aware of the confined nature of it. I think maybe the school district is going to look at a few things that might make the egress in and out a bit easier. But it was good. Nice to see a lot of people walking their children in, smiling faces and walking out with tears in their eyes. Anyway, it was a very good day, and, and the traffic flow, while congested, was very considered and very safe. And a nice police presence by our, our police force in a supervisory sort of way, greeting kids, that sort of thing. Real good deal, so it all went well. That's my neighborhood, so I go down there.
I told Officer Reynolds, he, he probably was, the, the kids were safe, but it was all the parents stepping back off the curb into the traffic to take pictures against the sign that he was going to have to watch out or he was going to have blood on his hands. Yeah, it was great having them there. They actually go to all the schools on the first day, so Byron?
It's Friday night at 7:00. Central High School has a varsity home game against the West Albany Bulldogs, and could use your support.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. All right. If nothing else, we will turn it over. City Manager Scott McClure.
Just a few items. Senior Center actually has a trip going right now to Eastern Oregon. And a nice shift is, they tried it last year and it didn't work. They didn't have enough people, and this year they filled out really quickly. So they're actually going to Eastern Oregon right now. Highway 99, you noticed, a lot of progress. Weather's not helping right now, getting the final, you know, lift of asphalt put on, but I think that'll get there when they can get a good weather window. And then just a nice, nice one going forward on the Making Spirits Bright program. Getting a lot of activity. We have probably up to eight new displays have been purchased. We actually have multiple businesses, a couple service clubs, including Rotary. Chamber of Commerce is going to chip in one, so it's going to start getting more and more light in the park there, so.
And the date for the activities?
Is.
December 7th, I think.
That sounds right.
Yeah, the 6th would be the tree lighting, and so Saturday, December 7th, the day after the tree lighting, will be Making Spirits Bright with all the fun activities in downtown and the park. So that's great. Thank you very much. And that's it for you this evening. All right, this is the time for citizen comments, and so if we have received any of those, Ms. Bowman, nothing, then we shall move on. And the business agenda tonight, so we did add a presentation on our city hall. And Suzanne, if you don't mind, I'll take them first. So if we want to get set up, we have some consultants here who've been doing a lot of work for us over the last year or so. And Scott, perhaps you want to remind us of the process here while we get them set up and going?
Yep. So this is, this is our city hall project, and so that we brought in FFA consultants, and that was to give us a, a top-to-bottom analysis of looking at this building, the city hall building. When we started with the project, it was multiple options, including just remodel, brand-new options, consolidating buildings, keeping separate. We came back to you previously, and, and a key one was, you can't rescue city hall. There's just no point to it. So it's just not cost-effective. So we narrowed it back down to potentially leaving Volunteer Hall in place with some improvements, a brand-new city hall, or a consolidated concept. And so what the consultants are going to probably, unite is, is the whole suite of where we, how we got here, where we are. They've updated cost estimates, so now you can have your sticker shock. You can have your moment on that. You can leave us with that, and then the, answer any questions you have. Key thing here is this is the conceptual design, that this, is this a good way to go forward? Our next step with them, we need to authorize some additional funds to, to keep going with design and getting really down to what you think of as, you know, architectural-level designs.
Thank you. Oh, this is very heavy. Heavier than Alex. Wish I could have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Share.
We can share.
We can share.
Yeah, you'd be good. Actually, you know, if you want to just spray some of those around if people are interested, why don't you just do that?
Couple more, I guess we give one to each side.
Larry wants to look at it. The building inspector, what?
Good, good, good.
Grab that first.
Hang it.
Well, thank you very much for having us back to close out this portion of your city hall conceptual thinking. We, what we've just passed out is our final document, which encompasses our findings as well as the, sort of the history of the project to, to the point that we developed our findings. So you'll have all the meetings that we had, the meeting notes, programming, questionnaires, and things like that. So that's all the meat that makes it so heavy at the, at the end. But at the front, we've got a memorandum, which goes through the process that we went through and defines some of the findings. through the process that we went through and defines some of the findings that we came to. And then our two option, we continued to call them Option 3 and Option 4, which was our new city hall and our new city hall and renovated Volunteer Hall option. So Option 3 is the new city hall with a renovated Volunteer Hall. And Option 4 is the entirely new building that encompasses all the functions of both buildings. And then after that, we've got our rough order of magnitude cost estimates for both of those options. And I think what we'll do is just start with just a brief overview of the layouts as they turned out in this, in this study. And Kalen will walk you through those.
All right. So I'll start with Option 3. I want to turn to that. Last time we were here, we presented kind of a very rough site layout and adjacency diagram for all, for options. And we agreed to move forward with Options 3 and 4. So the site plan should look pretty similar to what you've seen last. We did get into a little more detail, just actually looking at, not fully logistically parking-wise, but a little more realistic. So the parking counts are going to be not as high as you saw last time. But so for Option 3, we have a new city hall that's connected across the parking lot to a renovated Volunteer Hall. And an exterior trash enclosure for those buildings. The, this option has 27 parking stalls that are just at city hall in addition to what you have at the senior center. And it maintains the alleyway and main vehicle access off of Warren Street. So this is pretty similar to what you saw last time. But what's different is on the backside, on the next page, we, previously, it only showed you some basic adjacency diagrams. And we've taken that to the point of a more developed floor plan. So this gives you an idea of what kind of spaces we're accounting for, the size of these spaces. And what you see in front of you is what the rough order of magnitude pricing is based on. And the spaces provided here are a result of the programming meetings and multiple meetings with people at the city to see what wanted to be close to where, and the sizing needed for each individual space. We've accommodated some room for growth, but not a crazy amount of room for growth. Because we didn't want to overestimate or inflate the numbers too much.
Or oversize the building beyond what might be realistic.
Yeah. So, so that's that option.
And can I, can I just ask you, it's got the little arrows for pedestrian access between the two. And that's really just paintings on the asphalt, right? Or there's nothing?
Yeah. Potentially, you could have a covered walkway. But that, like, logistically, with cars moving through, there's that, that obviously complicates things. But that was one of the concerns with this option, is that staff still is divided across two buildings. So when we're looking at the pros and cons of these options, that's definitely one of the pros of combining it all in one building, is that, you know, your court clerk doesn't have to wheel things between in the rain, and is able to be close to all the different groups that they need to be close to.
But in this option, we tried to minimize that distance between the two by creating, putting the entrance to the new city hall directly opposite the existing entrance for this building.
So the overall layout for this one is assuming that there would be a prominent entrance on Main Street to welcome in the public and to maintain that downtown presence, but also having an entrance off the parking to allow for close connection to this building and for the easy access from the staff parking areas and visitor parking areas.
And it also preserves, I assume the giant green circle is the tree.
Yes. So this, this option preserves one of the trees that you have in the green space next to the existing city hall. And from what I understand, one of the more popular of the trees.
Do we play favorites with the trees in the, next to city hall? Well, yes, we do.
I've heard some are messier than others.
Well, that's probably true. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding.
Oops, sorry. Okay. And then Option 4, like we mentioned, is combining the functions of the city hall and Volunteer Hall all into one. Similarly to the previous option, we tried to maintain a really strong present on Main, presence on Main Street and from the parking lot. So there's kind of a dual entrance. So people, whether they're coming in off of Main Street or parking in the parking lot, really know where to go when they're showing up for whatever they need to, whatever business they have at the city. Obviously, by putting everything in one, in one building, we're able to make the parking a lot more efficient. And therefore, there's more parking in this option. Forty dedicated city hall parking stalls in this, in this scheme. And again, primary vehicle access off of Warren Street and pedestrian entrance off of Main Street. And in this option, there'd be one lobby that serves both the council and court functions, as well as the city hall functions, and kind of divides those spaces from each other, allowing different things to happen in those spaces, but also provides one area where people need to show up at. So regardless of whether they're showing up for a court appointment, or a council meeting, or to pay a bill, there's one spot that they come in, and then they're able to find where they need to. So that's definitely an advantage for this, not just for staff, but for citizens who are showing up. There's less confusion about knowing where to go when there's one building. Again, this has same spaces as on the previous option, similar sizing. Basically, the same blocks, but laid out differently because it's all in one building.
But a little more square footage. So this one gets 15 to 75 versus 14, 830 total.
Yeah. So for this one, we were able to enlarge a lot of the spaces, especially for the court and council functions, because we're not working within the existing building. We were able to get a few more of the wish list items into, into this. Larger jury rooms, a conference room, a court clerk office that's within the kind of court and council area, and a slightly larger council chamber and court.
But there is only one restroom on the first floor in the council area? Is that right?
Yeah. Off the lobby, there's a majority of the restrooms are located. And that one would be for the jury and judge back of house spaces. So the public would use the ones off the lobby.
Perfect. Thank you.
Do either of these buildings have a clock?
That wasn't part of this process, since we're not getting to the nitty-gritty of design. This is all just about programming.
That comes next.
Both options do expand into the area where your existing clock is.
Now the clock's gone.
What?
The dear departed clock.
Okay. Any questions on this option?
Kind of a lot. There's a lot of spaces to take in. I'm just looking at the size of the mayor's.
162 square feet?
162 is better than the third, what, 15 or so square feet now?
And how often have you used it?
I haven't, because there was an intern in there for a while.
So if there are any other questions regarding the layouts?
I do have a question regarding layout. And please forgive me, I'm relatively new to this, this portion of the process. Hypothetically, regardless of which of these options we went to, how close would this layout be to the final building? I know that we're looking at very high-level, high-level pictures here. But is this 90% of the way there as far as the sizes and layout of the spaces? Or is there still potential for some of that to shift?
I think there's a really high likelihood that things would shift, once you hire somebody to actually provide full design services. Because what this is based on is some interviews and some basic adjacency understandings. But once you start actually working with real building systems and whatnot, things will inevitably shift. I'd say as far as the site location, that's probably going to be pretty similar, no matter how you end up going, just because of the strong desire to keep a connection to Main Street. So I imagine there's, that probably wouldn't change a whole lot unless the vision changes by all the stakeholders drastically. But as far as layouts and things, I imagine, once you hire somebody, they would probably reference what's been done previously, but not use that as their basis to.
So there is a possibility to get that mayor's office down underneath 100 square feet again?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
If that's your goal, I'll let you two take it out.
Pretty sure whoever the mayor is when this thing gets built.
We won't have gone to our rewards.
So, and so presumably, storage and IT and things like that are not in a moldy basement any longer in these?
No.
No basement at all?
No basement at all.
No basement at all. Wow.
Do you have an estimate of how much of the electricity that the building will use will be provided by the solar panels?
Uh, we do not. You'd have to, it'd depend on what, what, like, mechanical systems you use and what type of lighting systems you end up going with, and how, and how many solar panels you end up putting there. But we didn't.
Right. And those, those were potential uses of that particular space. So if you wanted to use a green roof rather than solar panels, because I don't know, they might be mutually exclusive, given how much shade solar panels could provide. So that's really sort of, those are optional scenarios.
Thanks for considering them.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Before we head into the dollars?
Yep. Well, that was fun.
So our, if you turn the page past the, the options that were drawn graphically, we've got the summary sheet of the, the estimates that we have done for this. And the summary sheet is broken down into both Option, maybe I should do this, Option 3 and Option 4. Option 3 is broken down into both the remodel, a Volunteer Hall as designated by the R, and the new building of the city hall is designated by the N. And so, just to cut to the chase, what we determined, doing some rough evaluation of the, the square footages, is that we're very close in cost between the remodel and new building, and the new building in total. But I think what we need to also understand is that you're, you may not be getting exactly what you want in the remodel plus the, plus the new in Option 3, just because you're working within this space and, and using it for what it can be used for, which is, is great in and of itself. But in Option 4, you may be getting more of what you want and more of what you need, because it's going to be, it would be purpose-built to the needs that you have. So just to go through it just quickly, so to understand all the different items that we've included, the total hard costs come from the backup for each of those buildings. And so when you turn the page, you can see that we have further breakdown of Option 3 and Option 4. And the total hard construction costs come from those pages. And then we've allowed for two years of inflation. And right now, we're running, in the, in the Portland area, state of Oregon, we're running around 7% of year-over-year escalation for construction projects. So we've assumed that case scenario for this for two years. Additionally, this is a very high-level conceptual design. And so we've assumed 25% contingency to provide, you know, for the unknowns that, that we can't have gotten into at this level, with general conditions and profit and overhead at what the going rate seems to be in, right now. And that provides us with the markup subtotal, and then the subtotal for the construction. So what the contractor would be, would be charging for that work, for each of those options. And then in addition to that, there are a few things that, being a public building within the state of Oregon, we need to consider. One is 1 and 1/2% for green energy technology, which might be where the solar panels come in. And another is the 1% for art program. And then even more pragmatic is having furniture. So, so we've allowed for sort of a moderate level of furniture as a cost per square foot. And then that gives us a total for total construction, including those, those additional elements. And then we've added soft costs on as well, in order to cover, you know, your own staff's time, as well as design fees for the, for the design professionals that are hired, are hired to, for a project grand total of, of those figures that we have for, in the green area. What isn't included, which we've tried to identify at the asterisk, is costs for temporary offices and relocation of your existing staff. Any green building certification programs that might be desired at that point, so LEED or Net Zero or, or things like that. And then any bicycle storage or shower rooms within the building, that may be something that is desired in the future. It came up briefly when we did our, our study. And we wanted to make sure that it was captured at some point, so that in, you know, if there is desire and intent, and often that's tied with green building programs as an amenity, that you could consider it at that point, too. So the backup that we have just sort of breaks down in a little bit more detail, the, the costs generally per area of the building or for building element type. And, and these are all just really general assumptions about type of construction or level of, or quality of materials. And we've tried to assume, you know, durable but high-quality materials that will, you know, stand the test of time, but also lend a significance to the building that, you know, a typical office building may not have. It's your city hall, and so we want it to feel like a civic building. And what else? Oh, one, one thing I wanted to mention additionally is for the remodel of the Volunteer Hall, we included an alternate to, to clad, you know, at least the three sides that aren't muraled in brick. If we were using brick on the existing building in a way to try to tie the two buildings together to make it seem more like a civic center, then, then having different materials might allow it to, to seem. So I think that is just really the nuts of it. What would you like to ask? Anything?
Yes. So you raised your hand first, so you get to say what those bottom line numbers are, because you noticed they didn't say them. And so if you want to mention what the two options are, we're looking at.
High-level, wrong numbers.
Please refer to that page.
I would love to. So Option 4, the grand total is just over $7 million. Option 3 is roughly the same. My question for Option 4, looking at the proposed outlay of that, I noticed this building is gone. So does that include, does that estimate include the removal of this building and then the repaving of this whole, of this whole area?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, demo over-doubles.
Yeah, I saw, I did see that. I was just hoping that it was included.
And it's, it's important to note, too, that demolition of an entire building is easier and usually often less expensive than selective demolition of portions of a building. So you're not having to maintain elements and keep them working and keeping them intact can be complicated and challenging.
I know it's per square foot, it's 50% more expensive to remodel.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, especially this puppy. Okay. And Counselor Lopez?
Question regarding parking. I'm noticing that Option 4, the
I'm noticing that option four, the, the combined option has a roughly 33% increase in city hall parking stalls over option three. And is there, do we need that much, that much parking? Is it assessed that we're already that, at that big of a deficit?
That hasn't been fully assessed, but it was our understanding from the staff. They wanted to just see what it would be like to max out the parking as a possible amenity for downtown. So this is just kind of, if you decided to max it out. But there would also be a, a further study into how much you want actually. Because there, yeah, there could be a case where you don't necessarily want it at maximum.
So is there, so, so there is the potentiality that some of that space currently assessed for parking could become green space or bicycle parking or other alternative transportation options?
Yes, definitely. And the increase is obviously just because it's more efficient to lay it all out together instead of in pieces around the existing building.
Yeah, shocking. Shocking that anything could be more efficient than what we have right now. Other questions? Counselor Belts, anything?
No, it's just there, there's a.
Where's, where's the bus stop? Where does the bus stop go? Transportation options, person right here.
We do not have a bus stop here. Our bus stop is by the library, but well, within a block of the library. However, when we have a trolley, we will certainly expect there to be a trolley stop in front of the city hall. And that may be some of these extra parking spaces as well, could be trolley storage or trolley stop. We didn't tell you about that part, did we?
No, this is the first time I've heard of a trolley.
Yeah, well.
No, there's just, there's just a tremendous amount here to digest. And so I, I hope we have a little bit of time before we're going to have to make any serious decisions.
About 18 seconds, so please refuse. And Counselor Silbernagle has looked over a bazillion of these in his career at the Western Oregon University. So what kind of questions do you have for our team?
At this level, I don't think I have many questions. But I was, I guess I'm really pleased to see that the options are fairly close in this case. And to me, then that leads to the benefits for really, and it's fact that shows it slightly lower, but it's so close that are really, they're equal pretty much. But I'm glad to see that kind of play out the way it has, because it seems like that puts us in a pretty good position going forward. Still $7 million price tag, so that's not going to be easy to work through.
Counselor Carey?
Good luck at actually being seven. We've never hit one yet, so I don't know why we're too worried about that. So help me with the, because I heard what you said about the, in respect to Counselor Lopez's question relative to how firm is this and what's it really going to look like? So are we, I mean, I, 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 I guess I'm stunned by, by, you know, we've got meeting rooms, we've got storage, we have break, and then we have IT on the upstairs corner offices.
Which option are you?
I'm reading that correctly.
Which option are you looking at?
I'm looking at option four right now, which is the whole deal.
Yeah.
And those, and, and then on the bottom, and I understand there's no reference to any window, you know, or any glaze, any of that stuff, certainly. But again, we've got, in the corner office areas, which I always thought was, were sort of the, the prime ones, you've got executive conference, the judge, who's part-time and only here periodically in, in the evening generally. Now, Channard loves this, because the finance is, got a corner office. And then we've got a mechanical and electrical. Yeah, and, and stairs. I, you know, I, I, and while there's no elevations here,
We're not, yeah.
It, it, it look, I, I don't know. I'm, 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 I'm thinking we could make this jazzier without making it a lot more expensive. I don't know. But again, to, you know, everybody's point, there's a lot of information here, and, and it's hard. But I'm trying, I'm just looking at, at, you know, juxtaposition to one another and public impression with the public, and I'm, I'm trying to get a handle on it.
And Kristi, if I could take that one, John? Yeah. Think of this as functional. This is really functional. So staff worked very closely with the firm. Where do we need people? Where, we didn't get to that level of, who's got this office? But we looked at very critically, if people come in, you know, the big driver is finance, that's huge. Then you pop upstairs, you get to the building, community development next to each other. You know, then you can isolate off, you know, the, you know, city manager is not as, as, you know, customer-driven as that, as far as that goes. So this is very functional, that kind of back to Counselor Lopez's question. I would look at this as a darn good start. And then I think it'd be fine-tuning it, but, I mean theoretically, you could obviously just invert things. You could just mirror image, you know, if we decided that was a better way to go. But I think as far as the functionality, this is, this is a really good design. I think that's where we'd want to start with the next level.
There's also room for dialogue about the culture of office placement and who, who sits where when it gets to that point. And, and that'll be something that, you know, will the, the city manager and we and staff will discuss, because there's a lot of different philosophies about light and windows and space and corner offices in, in a very old conventional style versus a more open office environment. So I, again, I imagine this is more, here's a starting point.
Well, and we definitely had the discussion, particularly about that large storage area, because what we wanted to also do is, is have, if for some reason you needed to grow beyond the growth that we've already anticipated within this, within the square footage, what's the easiest thing to convert? And it would be storage space as opposed to office space being used or a conference room or something like that. So in, what we were thinking is that that's a future growth potential location that would be easy to manage. Ideally, we agree. We, a storage room right there on the corner of the building was, it would not be what we would do in a final design. So we completely understand your point. That's sort of what we were thinking for that particular element.
And probably one point to make, too, is that this has very little growth into it. That this isn't, we'll, we'll factor in 50% growth in staff and other functions. This, this kind of puts us right in there with just a little bit of flexibility for the future. Now, I think it would last, that we don't envision, you know, giant escalations in staff anytime in the future. But, yeah, this is, this is not oversized by any means. It's, it's actually pretty minimal.
Given, given that statement, I, I'm noticing that there is a lot of, a lot of space to build off of Counselor Carey's line of question. A lot of space that's devoted to judicial matters. The judge's office, court clerk's office, court clerk's lobby. Right now, all these are, are part-time positions. Is this with the view that these would become full-time positions even without that small amount of growth?
Doesn't really matter. I mean, a judge needs an office whether they're here full-time or, or long time. The, the court clerk would be here all the time, and then obviously trying to get some assistance to that staff person. A jury room's a jury room. We frankly, doesn't happen a whole lot. It's, it's kind of a boarding on a closet back here right now, hard to get anything done in there. We even use that periodically when we do labor relations, and you have to like stick a little table in there and kind of hover around it, so. So I think those things are actually, even though they're, they're spaces that aren't used all the time, they're necessary. And just like the council chambers, I mean, council, this room, if you really took a percentage allocation of a day, it's not used that much.
And I, I think one of the, the differences between this room and a judge office is that, you know, if a judge is part-time, this room has multiple uses, whereas an individual's office does not.
Yeah, like I said, the tricky one there is you need an office whether they're here full-time or part-time.
Yeah. What does the judge do now?
Once a week.
But what, what does he do for, for an office?
Oh, it's actually right back in the corner.
Oh, okay, next to the, the jury.
Awesome jury.
Cubby. Okay.
Take a look, yes. Lovely.
Pre-flesh, pre-flesh.
And we understood that acoustics for the judge's office were very important. And, and so that is actually been tried to take into consideration, so they're separated by some unoccupied space.
So this part, as far as process goes, yes, absorbing will be good. And we, we can do a follow-up on this. That'd be one option to bring it back and then talk about next steps. Or if you give me about five, 10 minutes, Janet could run some numbers, put the bond documents together. 15, maybe.
How badly do you want that corner, Janet?
She's got it right now, she's holding on to it.
No, how badly does she want the showers and the bicycles or lockers?
Be cautious with our humor now, please.
This is, yeah, this is great, and, yes.
There's not a time that I go into city hall now that I don't leave with a sense of dread, imagining what would happen if two minutes later there were a massive earthquake, how many lives would be lost. So time really is of the essence here to get that building demolished and get a new one built. But I do believe that we need to make sure that the people of Monmouth, who are going to be paying for this building, have a full opportunity to give us their input.
Thank you. And to that end, I was going to ask if this is available electronically, so we can link it on our website so that everybody else can get the joy?
Yeah, we'll be getting a, a digital copy.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, we'd like to share them.
And then it's yours, so do whatever you want with it.
I, I do have a question on.
Yes.
Both of these have sort of larger ground floors than, than upstairs. You know, like, like on option four, we've got an outdoor break area and then a area dedicated to a green roof that would, or solar panels. And then on, on option three, we have, we have something over, you know, the mechanical and, you know, the fire riser. Is there, is there some economy to that? Or would we be better off to build two stories all the way up for additional space? For perhaps a somewhat, I mean, you've got your footprints the same. I, I just don't know.
It was just mentioned in staff surveys, the desire for an exterior break space that wasn't the parking lot, especially if we're taking away the green space next to the building. That's sort of park-like, even though it's not technically a park. So that's why that's included. But in your final design, it'd be up to you whether, like you said, that square footage is better used in another way, or if that's an amenity that can be provided to staff.
And again, it's important to look at the, the culture of the space. And having a little bit of green space, a little bit of break space, is an amazing thing to give to a staff. It may seem like, well, that's, you know, the space we could be using to, I don't know, put IT or something else. It's really important for people to have that sense of outdoors. You know, people in my office building, they, they walk in the basement where the cars are driving around, because that's the only space we have to get out. And it's just, it's, it's not a pleasant place to, to get your 10,000 steps. And so I just think it's important for us to consider the culture, again, of how the employees will feel being in that building all day. We're not going to be there all day, they will be.
And just looking through there, there's, in, in meeting minutes, and so there's lots of great detail back there, but I want to, just a couple of things caught my eye. Remember, I know I asked last time, what's the historic value of the building? Are we going to run into that? And we determined there is none. Not a particularly beautiful architectural style to preserve, not necessarily keeping with anything else in downtown.
And previous renovations had kind of destroyed any previous architectural style that there had been. I think that was.
Yes, that's a good way to describe the architectural style. It's just previously destroyed.
Cinder block era.
And I also, a question I had is answered here, that this would be, either both would be built to life-safety seismic, so 15 minutes to get everybody out of the way before something happens, but nothing more. We're not going to be using it as shelter or emergency operations, because we built that into our police.
Right, you're exactly right. And that would increase construction costs to like by a certain premium if you decide to go to that level.
Darren and I oversee the building of buildings for schools, universities, so we know that.
You deal with that.
Yeah. Okay. And any other questions or comments? Yeah, a lot, a lot of great information.
Digest. Happy to answer comments or questions at another time, too, when you come up with them.
Right, I think, yes, so important to note, we didn't really have a, anything planned for a decision item tonight necessarily. Just either if we've got some direction, we think we want to go right off, we can do that, or put this in the hopper of things we, how we want to communicate with the community about, which we are talking about.
Just a process question, I guess. At what point, you know, if this is a template, which, you know, clearly it is, and, you know, at what point do we go to the community for input on this? I mean, it looks like a rectangular box right now. But, because that's what it needs to look like, because it's a space utilization deal. Is that impactful with the community? Is that, is that something that would engage the community? Or do we need to, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I need to, I'm anxious for the pros to weigh in.
Yeah, yeah, basic level, I think if someone looked at this right now, you could obviously comment if you like, but it's kind of hard to comment if you don't know what the operation is. It'd be like telling me how to design your house the way that you want it, kind of a thing. But I, I think it probably, you could definitely put it out there just to make sure, or just let people know that we're going to have a follow-up discussion coming in here a little bit more. I think where it's going to resonate with public is when you start putting pretties on it, when you start seeing what's the outside going to look like? Really, what's the lobby going to look like? How is, what's the council chambers going to be? We saw some frankly beautiful council chambers with woodwork and interesting things in the room, and little, little upgrade from this, so.
And, and we don't, we have not budgeted for that process?
We actually do have some funds available.
We do?
Yep.
And that, that was in our general fund in our budget process?
Yeah, and then we just need to double-check, just go out. We need, we need to double-check how much we have available. We might need to infuse a little bit more in that to, to get the work done, but.
And that would be another RFP process, where we would invite other architects or people to come in and start working on those options. And then often that includes a public component as well.
Got it, yeah.
Well, I, I agree, Counselor Sharmer, and thanks for bringing that to our attention. I mean, this isn't something we can let, sit around for another two or 10 years, because it's already been sitting around for that. I love the comment that, what, since 1965, there's been a discussion about city hall. So definitely something we need to keep moving on. But unless you have direct and specific guidance that on his way out the door, city manager McClure should X, we will discuss amongst ourselves and come up with some good direction very soon. After we, after John Carey has read every page of this, underlined it.
I'd like to read the executive summary, I'd settle with that.
Red pen in the, in the margins, it'll be amazing. We'll be calling you for lots of questions.
But I'd like to read the executive summary first, at least.
Thank you very much. This is very helpful and, yeah, obviously, it's, and I like having, and this will be in the online version, the actual programming questionnaire, so every department. What do you do now? What do you need to do that you can't? What works well, what doesn't? Who do you need to be connected to? What is acoustic issues that you're concerned about? What about security? You know, think, so there's some great questions here that probably really developed a good product from our staff. I appreciate that, so.
Well, thank you very much for, for letting us come and speak with you again. And we've really enjoyed the process, and it seems like it's going to be a great project going forward.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the staff as well for taking the time to meet with them and give their feedback and their input. That's important, too.
A crazy process. All right, we have one more business agenda item. And hopefully we can get, we'll do this and then take a break. And hopefully we can get, we'll do this and then take a break. And so, again, thanks. And we will invite Suzanne Duffner, our Community Development Director. And it looks like she's wearing her Planning Commission hat for this activity, so.
That's right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Thanks for the opportunity to present to you tonight a grant opportunity that's come to the city's attention. The state of Oregon administers a program that's known as the Transportation Growth Management Program, or it's called TGM for short. And one of the services that they provide to local communities through that program is what's called a code assistance program. And that program, cities can use to update their zoning ordinances or their development codes. And so they, the state provides the funding to pay for a planning consultant to come in and provide that extra capacity to the cities. It's a short list of consultants that they pre-selected. There is no cash match requirement for the cities to participate in the grant program. So that's always a nice plus. But we are, the cities are expected to provide the in-kind support and services to make it a successful project. So examples of those things would include my time to help review materials, schedule meetings, use of our building spaces, and providing notices. So that's kind of how the financial mechanism works for the grant. The code assistance is really targeted to the community's needs. So it can be their setup as specific to one or two particular items that you're trying to get in and improve in your code. So for example, if the city didn't have downtown design standards and they wanted to develop those, that could be the main focus for the code assistance project in that community. The other option would be to do more of a comprehensive review and assessment of the community's code and get in and look at a number of items that are in need of updating. And so as your planner of two years, this has been one of the things that I've become painfully aware of, some of the challenges in working with our current zoning ordinance. It seems like every project that comes up for development, that there's some barrier, challenge, or thing that we have to work through. And I'm sure when the code was originally written in 1983, it worked just great. It was innovative and fresh. But we've changed how we do planning and zoning. We've kind of gone back to putting some of the uses together to make commercial residential neighborhoods a little more walkable and bicycle friendly. And that's really what this TGM program is aimed at. They call it integrating land use and transportation, so that we're not such a car-dependent society that people can actually take some short trips on their bike or walking or, heaven forbid, ride a bus, right, to get to some of our common destinations. So we've also found, working through the Planning Commission and with our recent housing needs analysis, that there are some particular issues with our code around housing and trying to promote the type of housing types and design that we want to see in our community that our code is not encouraging necessarily and is, again, actually providing some barriers to what the kind of development we want to see. So that's something that this program could help us start to implement, some of the recommendations that came out of our housing needs analysis. So definitely a benefit from that point. The Planning Commission held a work session. It's been about a year. We've been a little bit busy with development. So meant to get this to you a little bit sooner, but it's, like I said, it's been busy. We did have a person from the TGM program come out and talk to us and explain it in more detail. And I believe there was a good response and interest from the Planning Commission to explore this resource and to see if we couldn't apply and get some assistance in there. So it will require a good portion of my time to help with a project of this magnitude. But I think that it's important enough to the success and the development of Monmouth that it's something that we need to do sooner or later. So that's why we're bringing it forward to you. The application process is not super in-depth or labor-intensive. It really is submitting a letter of interest with some letters of support. They want to, the TGM program staff want to make sure that the City Council, City Planning Commission staff are all on board and support these TGM growth principles that are included in the packet as an attachment. So that's kind of the strings, right, that go along with any free money, is that, you know, we would be supporting these TGM growth principles. But yeah, if the council believes this is a worthy project and we want to apply for this, then that would be the first step, is to submit that letter of interest. The state awards these grants kind of on a first-come, first-er basis. It's on a biennium. And I anticipate the project would probably take about a year. Long process is on average how long these projects generally take. But with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
So my question, and I see, because I was kind of trying to say, well, how would you prioritize? You've mentioned lots of different things this could be used for, and how would we select? And I see in the selection process, the first one is, we actually just do the inquiry. And it says we would potentially give them, we would give them potential projects. The program manager at the state would then discuss those and advise to help determine which projects have promise. So in a way, it looks like they might help us formulate which of those would be the most viable for their funding. So that's kind of an interesting part of the RFA process, right?
Right, yeah. And they, they're real good about, I think, working with the community. I've already started my two-page list of code fixes that we could get in and really see some improvements on. As I mentioned, the housing needs analysis that we had a consultant help us with, identified some other specific issues as well. So yeah, we start to pull together a scope based on those. I've also seen it where kind of that's the first step of the project, is to do a little code audit or assessments, work with the Planning Commission. We can have a joint work session with the council and get in and kind of look at those, flesh out those issues that we really want to focus on a little bit more, so, yeah.
And then they use sort of a multi-agency approach. So they have an ODOT looks at it, DLCD looks at it.
Yeah, it's a jointly administered program between ODOT and the DLCD, Department of Land Conservation Development, so, yeah.
See if there's anyone there that remembers Lane.
No, they're there.
They're still there.
They're still there, because he's gone.
Because he's gone.
That was a good spot to be.
Yeah. All right, so other questions?
Thank you for taking the initiative to find this grant. I think it has the potential for a lot of improvement in Monmouth. Thank you for that.
One of the things that struck me as I looked at this, it seems to check off a number of the things that we've identified as goals. You know, the diversifying modes of transportation, you know, which we've talked about on Infinitum. It does prioritize and request that we be involved with a lot of public participation in the code amendment process, which is another one of our, of our goals that we have stated. So I'm, personally, I'm pretty excited about it with a bit of trepidation as well. You know, we, I read in the, in the discussion portion, you know, about the code, you know, the modernizing the Monmouth zoning code and ordinances. And you've talked about a number of barriers that are there in our existing code. And so, you know, I think we need to get after that, and this would help us. But I didn't see a lot of that in the Transportation Growth Management Program things. It talks about, this seemed to be more of a, you know, I don't know. I can't get my hand around it exactly.
Basically, I think, John, the selection factor is need. The need must include both transportation and land use planning objectives. So I think that's where those two get tied together.
Yeah, I think so.
They require it.
And recall that one of our goals was to look at the transportation plan, reevaluate that. So it's all there. I'm, you know, under eligibility, number two, projects will be considered only if the local government understands the TGM principles and is willing to work towards solutions consistent with them. I'd hate to get locked into something that when it actually comes into fruition, we don't want. You know, I don't know what that would be, but I'm, but that's strong language. And that came through a time or two previously. In other words, this is how you need to do it. And I'd hate to get locked into something. I'd like to, and I'm sure that with all the processes, that there would be an opportunity for some negotiation back and forth.
In my experience, it's not that prescriptive.
Okay.
Yeah, they may provide a range of options and recommend that this one is, you know, the preferred based on the TGM principles. But I haven't seen it where they gave that money back at the city. It's like, you know, we'll take some of column A, but not column B. You know, I mean, usually there's a spectrum of.
Because I mean, arguably, this could go, if they've got consultants and so forth, that they've sort of pre-selected. And it could be going down a path that in the end, we may not be comfortable with. As long as we've got a parachute that we can throw out, you know.
Yeah.
But, but I, this, to me, this checks a lot of boxes for us. Well, I mean, I don't mean, you know, my, this last little bit reservation is not a problem. I think this is something we really need to do, because it, again, checks several of the boxes that we've been after.
And I think, again, yeah, those key principles after the sentence you read are listed that really do match, right? They recognize that transportation and land use have to be made in a comprehensive process that addresses the complex interrelationship. Planning and development codes ought to address relevant modes of travel with special attention to alternate transportation. And then mixed use, efficient use of land, vibrant downtowns, and improving connectivity. So absolutely, that's their guiding principles. I don't think we'll have a problem doing that. So if Lane says they don't have a specific way, they do that.
Yeah, that's for sure.
I would like to, I would like to highlight that this, first off, Councilor Carey, I appreciate you pointing out how this intertwines with a lot of the core of our goals that we laid out in the 2019-20 goals. There is a community engagement process here that is listed in the first of their key principles. Decisions being made in a comprehensive process. There is a, not necessarily addressing the UGB expansion, but now that we know where that's gone, addressing other options available to us that might alleviate some of that problem, as well as the sidewalk and transportation projects, assessing economic development capacities. This goes hand in hand with opening some of those doors to alleviate some of those roadblocks that are currently throttling that. I feel that this goes hand in hand with a lot of the things that we set out to do. Maybe not at the core, but it makes a lot of those things more achievable. And I, for one, think it's great and support it.
Yeah, well, it definitely will be a framework for more conversation, right? Which we need, those frameworks. Other questions or guidance? What basically our action would be to direct staff, all of the staff in the Community Development Department, to prepare an application for this and start that process, or to kind of pass on this for right now? Concerns about, I'm not hearing any concerns.
I have, I have concerns that, it makes me nervous when they see things like assistance. I'm not sure if that's the kind of assistance that we necessarily, we end up inviting, and I guess as the protectionist in me, but inviting outside people with their vision of how they think our community should be into our, not necessarily our decision-making process, but that we're somehow compelled, because we accepted this money, we're somehow compelled to adopt their vision of what they think Monmouth should be as opposed to what the people of Monmouth think that our vision should be. So my concern echoes, John, with how locked in we are and that, and when I saw the opportunity for success as a project has a high likelihood of adoption by the local jurisdiction, which, how do I know I want it if I haven't seen it yet? Because we all know that when we, when we accept money from the state or whatever, that there's always strings attached to it. Sure about the strings. I'm not necessarily comfortable signing up for something that I'm not aware of the consequences are. I would like to flush that out somehow. I mean, this sounds really good and the philosophies and the principles behind it sound great, as long as we can put our City of Monmouth nuance on these things. I'm just not sure that this is structured to allow for that, if you can.
Yeah, yeah, I think I can at least address some of that concern. And, you know, I think that's why we have to be, go into this with a full commitment to participate actively all along. Because it's not like they just go off into a black box and develop our code and then come back and say, okay, adopt this, right? There are a number, just like we did for the housing needs analysis, there's a number of work sessions, the Planning Commission, opportunities for outreach with the community. So I think when, you know, it'd be me representing Monmouth, working with the TGM staff and the consultant. And I'm very conscious of making sure that we have those opportunities to make sure that the issues that we need addressed are in that scope of work. And, you know, it's not to say that there won't be, you know, some of their, the TGM ideas or principles that will be incorporated in there as well. I mean, they're very much supportive of mixed use, looking at how do you encourage density, but doing it in a way that's livable neighborhood. So, you know, there definitely will be conversations around some of those kind of what I call key policy issues. But it's, in my experience, and I have worked with this program, and I should say in other communities, that, and as Lane was indicating, that there is flexibility, if you will, on how communities approach, you know, what the options are that are available to them. It's not just you have to adopt, you know, this black and white code language, because that's how they do in Portland, you know. And they recognize that smaller cities have different challenges. And so there, you know, there is even a model small cities code that's been developed for cities more like our size, understanding our capacity to build, administer these types of codes and programs. So I guess that's, you know, one of the things I would say to try to alleviate some of those concerns. I think they're very valid concerns, because you're right. When you go with somebody's monies, there's an expectations that you will comply with, you know, with those, the ideas that they're trying to further with those monies. So if there's hesitancy, that the city has very strong objections to those, then we shouldn't go after this money, because it'll be not worth our time, my time, or the, you know, the consultant's time and, or your time as well. But the scope can also be crafted, I believe, you know, I have to check on this. But, so there's kind of a check-in point. So maybe you go through that assessment and you say, these are kind of the key issues. And here's a work plan for how we're going to move forward on addressing those in our code. And at that point, we have a decision point of, okay, do we want to go further and actually go forward and write the code? Or are we, yeah, you know, thanks, but no thanks. I think we'll, you know, walk away and not have to invest all the time in that second phase. So that's, you know, to maybe get at that concern, that might be a way to structure the grant and the contract, so that we have a parachute, if you will.
An eject button. And if I could offer just some perspective on this, this is not a new program. It has a substantial track record. And I don't know how it is today, but I know going back in the days that I was the department, it was always oversubscribed by cities wanting in, which I think is reflective of how this serves cities. And these are cities large and small. I remember Peppner was one of them.
Yeah, they ran out of money.
I remember Hepburn was one of the, Hepburn was one of the great successes of the TGM program.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're not dealing with something that is coming, that is brand new, and we're going to be one of the first ones to test drive this vehicle. It is well-established and, and really very well-received by the, as a matter of track record, by the cities that have been a part of the TGM code assistance program.
Yeah, and they did. And that was part of it. We explored it last year, and they were out of money. So, we're kind of waiting for this next biennium to see if we could get on, they had a waiting list, yeah. So, I'm hoping they still have money, but it's been a couple of months in this biennium.
Pretty much through the whole history of the program.
Yeah.
Which speaks to, I think, its ability to work with, with cities.
I think there's also another fun part there that is innovation. So, the project would advance an innovative development.